Are we live? Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education Meeting on September 16th, 2020. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Greg Dietz. Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you also verify that we've been properly posted?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're going to move right into our bright lights this evening. Amanda Wagner will be talking on Avid tonight. There may be a little bit of a delay because I think she's in the other room and there's a delay in the streaming a little bit. I'm either seeing triples of Amanda or some other people.
Hello, everyone. We do have some visitors with us tonight, some of our recent North Avid scholars, our graduates, and they wanted to tell you a little bit about their experience in Avid as well as what they're currently up to. So I'm just going to pull up a quick presentation. All right, there we go. Thanks for having us here tonight. When we last spoke in May, we talked a little bit about our senior data that we didn't yet have because they had not graduated. Well, we have that data to show with you tonight. I want to just remind everyone that Avid is a K-12 system that we have here in Waukesha. Currently, we have 15 schools with the Avid system, six elementary schools, and then all of our secondary schools except for STEM have the Avid elective at it. And when we talk Avid, we talk about Avid school-wide impacting all of our students. We also have different branches of Avid, Avid Elementary, Avid Secondary, Avid Elective, and Avid Excel. Tonight, we're going to speak specifically about the Avid elective program, which is at our secondary schools, and focus directly on our graduates. When we talk about Avid, Avid helps close the opportunity gap for our students, and it does that through college and career readiness. There's a strong focus on aligning systems, leadership, instruction, and culture. And when we as educators insist on rigor, break down barriers, align the work, and advocate for our students, our students are presented with agency, given opportunity knowledge, and prepared to do anything they choose to do. This year, we had 53 graduating Avid seniors who were part of our Avid elective system. Waukesha North had its very first class of graduating seniors. That's who we have here with us tonight. Waukesha South has had many graduating classes of seniors. Waukesha West will have its first graduating class next year of seniors, as will E-Achieve. So of those 53 seniors, you have a little infographic in your board packet, and I hope you had a chance to look at some of that data. But a couple key points that I wanted to summarize for you is 53 scholars took over 221 AP and/or Project Lead the Way classes. That is huge, especially when we look at our typical Avid student, being given the opportunity to challenge themselves, to break down those barriers, and enroll in classes where they might otherwise not have felt confident in doing so. Our scholars earned over $2 million in scholarships. Some of our scholars had full rides. Some of our scholars, like Madison, are currently being paid, she's actually coming out ahead to attend school. And what I think is super important in the data that we give, so we do an exit survey just to see, we want to make sure that we're getting a return on our investment with the Avid system. 100% of our scholars stated that they would recommend Avid to a friend. And when you ask high schoolers, like, hey, would you tell your friends to take this class? You don't always know what you're going to get. And with that, they said 100% also agree that Avid helped them with their focus note-taking skills, improved their organization, their self-advocacy, and leadership skills. So I think that's pretty amazing when you look at that type of data. And to look at past data as well, which we've seen from our South seniors, is very, very similar. And our goal is to continue to have our seniors report feeling this way about our Avid system. Nationally, I just want you to see where we stand. When we talk about Avid nationally, because it's not just something that is in Waukesha, it's all over the place. Typically, 94% of Avid scholars complete college entrance requirements, and 90% are accepted into four-year colleges. Here in Waukesha, 100% of our Avid scholars completed the entrance requirements for school, and 100% are accepted into a two- or a four-year college. Not every single one of our scholars decided to go, especially in this pandemic. Some took a gap year. But they know how to apply again, and they know what to do if they so choose to do so. They have a Plan A, they have a Plan B, and they probably have a Plan C. And that is our ultimate goal when we look at our college and career readiness, our academic planning in Waukesha, that our students leave us with solid plans. So I don't need to speak anymore because these ladies have far more interesting things to say. So I'm going to turn it over to our graduates, Madison and Drew.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Drew Thorgerson. I graduated Avid this past year, so first Waukesha North graduating class of Avid. I'm currently attending UW Whitewater for elementary education because of, yeah, I want to be a teacher. So Avid, before I was introduced to Avid and brought into the class, I had an IEP. And shortly after I was in Avid, like, not even two or three months, I got out of my IEP. My case manager sat me down, and they said, look, we don't think you need this anymore because your grades are rising. I was taking an AP class, which I've never done before. I was just taking all these different leaps, and I'm proud, that was one of the proudest moments of my life, being able to get out of it. I loved it, though, like, don't get me wrong, but it's just one of those heartwarming experiences in Avid, especially like right now with college, everything's online. I have multiple notebooks and some binders for all my classes, and it's just helped me organize. I have an agenda, I write down everything that I have to do each day, when to do it. And I just can't thank Avid enough because it's giving me so many opportunities that not a lot of people can get. Any questions? Is that a thing? Okay.
We'll have time still to ask questions, maybe after.
Okay.
Madison also.
Thank you.
She's a true Avid student. What questions do you have for her?
Yes. You surprised us there, Drew. You caught us off-guard.
My name is Madison Kearns. I'm also part of the first graduating class at Waukesha North Avid. I am attending WCTC currently. I'm a full-time student there. I'm pursuing a firefighter/paramedic degree. You're probably wondering about the uniform as well. I currently work full-time out for the Lake Country Fire Department. I'm on a 24-hour, 48-hour schedule there, plus going to school full-time, which I absolutely love. I live there, too, at the fire station, that's my home. They're paying for all my schooling. I was a part of the dual enrollment academy, which I honestly do not think that's something in a million years I would have ever known about or have chosen to do if it weren't for Avid. I honestly went into high school, had no idea what kind of career I wanted, anything. And that dual enrollment academy, it led me, it completely changed my life. And I went into it extremely prepared because of Avid. I was taking, it's a 17-credit program, the firefighter and EMT one, so the time management, the note-taking, all the stuff that was involved, like, Avid 100% prepared me for it. And while I'm here, I'd also like to thank the School District of Waukesha as a whole for paying for that program. I can't tell you how much that means to me that I got to go to school. It put me so far ahead. Like, I walk, I'm 18-years-old, I get to walk into the firehouse. I have Fire One, Fire Two, and EMT currently. And just being able to do that, like, the amount of people that tell me how much farther ahead I am already, it's just, it's amazing. And I'm in class with 30-year-old people right now that are still trying to get, you know, all those certifications, and it just, I really, truly cannot thank School District of Waukesha enough for paying for that program. It truly meant the world. And for having Avid available because it completely changed my life. So I really do appreciate it. Any questions?
Mr. Baumgart.
I don't have any questions, and Amanda knows this. I'm so pleased to hear from you because, you know, as board members, we have to be careful about having favorites, but you've always been one of mine, and I've appreciated it. And to see it continued on, and you both have added a different little piece today to me, I've been paying attention for a number of years, when you talked about overcoming your IEP, if I can say it that way, that was startling even to me. And your access to the dual enrollment program because somebody helped you get to understand that was available to you, right? And every one of those little pieces is important as of going forward, somebody else is going to learn from what you've helped us with, so thank you for that.
You.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I was just wondering, in terms of, maybe you guys can answer this or not, but in terms of Avid connections to like a dual enrollment program, do we have other examples of that besides the one that was stated tonight?
So my senior year, I also did a co-op at Lowell Elementary School where I worked with a fourth-grade class, and I would have never also known about that opportunity if it wasn't for Avid, because the previous summer, I worked at Good Times, that day camp, and I was like, I think I want to be a teacher, and I reached out to Demel, sorry, Mr. Demel, Ms. Warner, and they were like, let's get you in this co-op. And I loved it, it was the best. I spent my last two hours at Lowell, and I just, I couldn't be more thankful for all the experiences I'm getting, or well, got, but still.
I also have an answer just to that question with dual enrollment. When I went into my interview process, they asked me, one of the top questions that I got asked in any interview I've been in is, how have you been prepared for this position today, or what puts you ahead of everyone else? Every time I brought up the Avid program, then they ask me what it's all about. I tell them it's, you know, learning about time management, notes, getting college, like, learning how to go to college, all those things, and being a top student in the school and becoming a leader. When I can go in and like name those qualities, it honestly, it's like an instant change in their facial expression every time. And it's like, you almost instantly know that you're going to get that position just because you brought up Avid. And so just Avid alone, just the name, and being able to explain it to people and what it does, it puts us super far ahead in application processes and in interview process. So there's that, too.
Yeah, question for both of you. How did you find out, or who encouraged you really to get into Avid? A teacher, a friend?
Yeah. I'll go make a phone call again. My guidance counselor reached out to me, Ms. Warner at North, and she was like, hey, there's this really great program I want you to look into, like, are you interested in joining? And of course, I was like, yeah, like, anything to help me get ready, because at the time, like, Avid would also bring in people to show you how to, like, credit card fees, like this and that, and it just like opened up these things up that like we didn't get in our high school experience. So now I can say, oh, I know how bank statements work, and like this and that. And just as soon as I got the opportunity, I took it. I was like, yes, I would love to be in this program. I've heard, I heard nothing but great things. So I just really want to thank, and Mr. Demel also recommended me to join, so that was really sweet. But yeah, thank you.
One of my teachers, Mr. Ringcone, I guess nominated me for it, and I got a letter. And I was like, oh, what's this? Like, at the time, I had no idea what it was. And honestly, I'm so glad I made that decision to go to that lunch and learn about it, because if I didn't, it would have been a totally different case. So that's how I found out about Avid, was through a letter of recommendation.
Yeah, those mentors, I'm sure have a special heart, or place in your heart for them to have encouraged you to get going and things. Yes, fantastic. Other questions? Mrs. Reinacek.
Thank you. I just have a couple. Madison, you talked about thanking the School District of Waukesha for paying for it, and I just wanted to thank our taxpayers. They give us the funds that we need to invest in programs, and we wouldn't know about the programs if it wasn't for Amanda and all of her colleagues bringing them forward and saying, this is what I heard about, it's working here, can we start this? And then they start with a class, and then when that does well, then they start with a school, and then they bring in more schools, and now it's been brought down to K through 12th grade. So I want to thank Amanda again and all of her people and our administration for saying yes to it. And then, and great job, Madison. And then Drew, I wanted to say, so before Avid, and you don't have to get into details or personal, but did you, you had an IEP, but did it feel like you couldn't learn, or did it feel like things were so overwhelming because you didn't know how to strategically put things in place? Okay, so you had an IEP because you felt like you had barriers and you couldn't learn, but Avid broke those down and figured out how you learned, and then taught you how to put things in order so that it didn't seem too overwhelming? Is that how it kind of?
Yeah, so my main problem was math and sum reading, but as soon as I got into Avid, we did the tutorials, which I could sit down with my classmates, put up the question on the board, and they would help me like walk through it, and like slowly as that went on, I would just start getting the hang of it, and the way I would take notes, it was so much easier. Always write the summary at the end of your notes because that really comes in handy later on. Like, honestly, in every way, Avid helped me get out, but it's in majority would be the learning, the different like learning techniques that I didn't get before, I think. But yeah.
So having that, when you were younger, which is what we're trying to do, bring it down, would have helped you a lot sooner to not even have that IEP as long as you did?
Yeah, I believe so, because I got tested for my IEP in fifth grade. And when I found out, I didn't even know about it until my first meeting, and I was like, what? But I kind of always felt bad about it, but as soon as like I got into Avid, I learned that everyone learns differently, and we can find ways that makes it easier, you know, for everybody. And it really taught me that, like, how to learn, well, you know, but like how to take notes properly and all of it, it was just, Avid just means a lot to me, if you can't tell, but.
That's so good. Do you ever get to go back and talk to the younger kids who are taking it? Do you ever take these guys in there, Amanda?
In a typical school year, we absolutely have our graduates back mentoring. This year, we're hoping at some point that they will come back and talk to our younger scholars. Drew is going to be a tutor for us virtually from her dorm room, so they are still finding ways to be part of our Avid family.
Great job, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Dan.
I just have a comment. We've heard the successes at South for years and years and years, and it's really exciting to have North's first graduating class, and you as amazing representatives to share your success story. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Greg, do you have a question? I'm, it's, you just make sure you wave your hand if you have a question. All right, go ahead. Oh, can you hold up, Greg? I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. We need to turn you up here a little, we need to turn up the volume a little bit.
[inaudible].
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
The School District of Waukesha has many amazing programs, but it takes motivated students like the ones that we have in front of us that take advantage of those opportunities and persevere and continue to move forward despite obstacles that actually make it work. So I want to thank them both for sharing their positive experiences tonight, but also show my appreciation and thanks to them for all of their hard work and dedication in making everything come together like it should, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Drew and Madison. We wish you luck in your future endeavors, and Amanda, keep doing what you're doing because it's good stuff, and the team that you work with. We appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Moving on to our recognitions, Dr. Seibert, I believe you have some to make?
I do, yes. So we have two special people that we want to talk about tonight, and those two individuals are Steve Fisher and Brett Hart, both from Waukesha South High School. They were honored last Friday on September 11th by the Waukesha Police Department. Dr. Cook and I got to be part of that special ceremony with the Citizens Service Award for their very brave role in the unfortunate event that occurred at Waukesha South last December. So they were honored, they were joined by their family members, and the police really mantra of honor, integrity, and courage was very much stressed for the role that they played. And it was a very touching event, was it not, Dr. Cook? And it was a lot of family members, there were some police officers that were honored that evening as well, and so I think it certainly is very well-deserved and wanted to make sure that the board knew about it, and we certainly congratulate those two gentlemen for their well-deserved award.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you for what you did, yes. This month, we do not have a student representative report, but hopefully we will have one next month, I hope. Are we going to return to those? I'm assuming we are. Moving on to our time where our citizens get to address the Board of Education, as has been past practice, each individual be limited to three minutes of time to talk. And at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Amanda will be giving you a signal, and if you could wrap up in 30 seconds, we would appreciate that. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker, and the Board of Education refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and the meeting participants, if you haven't done so already, please silence your cell phones. And we do have five speakers signed up this evening, and we're starting with Ellie McHenry. Full three minutes this time, Ellie.
I know, and I wrote for two, I'm sorry. All right. The principal, assistant principal, dean, principal secretary, attendance secretary, and health room assistant are all out at the same time. The counselors maintain their responsibilities to their students, but also serve in the role of dean, health room support, student services secretary, and other responsibilities as needed. Instructional coaches serve in their current roles while also serving as a long-term sub for maternity leave, onboarding new long-term sub, and serving as attendance secretary, admin backup, and other duties as assigned. Special education aides get pulled to be in the health room or isolation room, which in turn requires that special education teachers provide the supports the aides normally provide and therefore removes them from classrooms where the students on their caseload require teacher support. The student services secretary has a pre-planned absence, but the sub, who was previously assigned to cover for this, gets pulled the evening before to do contact tracing. Student services fill in for secretary while maintaining their responsibilities. Counselor gets pulled to sub in a classroom, and the remaining counselor is the sole provider of SEL support students. The lone counselor contacts a social worker to come over from another building to help support the counselor's role. This leaves the other building without student services to support. The above situation did not require hiring a substitute. These are all positions that could and should be filled by subs, but instead are filled by current staff doing two, three, or more jobs at once. This is not sustainable. Everyone does all of these things willingly and at an exceptional level because that's what educators do, but it won't be able to be maintained forever. Right now, the staff is hanging on by a thread. The last thing they need is to have the whole system change yet again. It has taken a lot of work and effort to set up the hybrid system we have. Please do not turn the whole apple cart over yet again. Constant change is not a good education policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ellie. Amy Gruber is up next, and Tom Piazek is on deck.
Our school system and the Board of Education is beholden to the taxpayers first and the students a very close second. I, as a taxpayer and a parent of kids in the district school, firsthand see that the hybrid model is failing and failing quickly. Taking the results of the school district's two surveys, we know that the majority of parents do not want this learning model for their kids. I also believe when taxpayers pay their taxes to the public school systems, this is not how they want their money spent. The district has given an amazing option of E-Achieve for families that are not comfortable with sending their kids to school. This online option offers teachers that are specifically trained in virtually teaching and students who want to learn virtually and can. As Richard Metz, an AP US history teacher at South High School, stated, "I have instead analyzed the key learning experiences my students need to master the standard and designed my instruction around those keys." In this quote, I hear that teachers are teaching to the test and not teaching the students the full content that the course is intended to teach, and this is what the district administration is praising? Now only a proficient grade is good enough as opposed to pushing the kids to an advanced level of thinking? The district is now spending money on distant learning tools and educating educators to be virtual teachers when there already is a good option, E-Achieve. I'm sure a better use of both the teachers' time and district money could be found. The district needs to work towards getting the students that want in-person learning back into our buildings full-time as soon as possible, not training teachers to be virtual teachers. This approach does not benefit any student, especially students with IEPs and kids in higher-level classes such as AP and pre-AP. I have seen this personally, two to three days a week for the last three weeks now and for the last three months in spring. Another obstacle we saw last week was district technology not working, and in this situation, it is impossible for an at-home student to do any work, while an in-school student has the luxury of an in-person teacher with the resources on hand. 30 seconds. To teach students. The district needs to follow the true science that the CDC is putting out and get students back in the classroom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Tom is up next, followed by Clint Werniger. I think I might have murdered your name, last name, Tom, sorry.
Piazek is close enough, don't worry about it. I want to start by talking about the hybrid model in the middle of high schools. For quick reference, Keller Moraine is at 11 days of in-person instruction. Captain Memorial, in their fifth week, is on 22 days in-person. Our kids have had five days. What should the parents tell their kids about these discrepancies? Sorry, open enrollment is passed, we can't get you into KM? Or, sorry, we don't have a 13K, they put you in CMH, but your district is perfecting the hybrid model. Watching the TNL meeting last week, it is clear how much time the teachers and district are putting into trying to perfect the hybrid model. Here's the thing, the hybrid model can't be perfected. Two hours of instruction per week cannot sufficiently replace five hours. It just can't. If it could, we would only need half the teachers when we come back to five days in person. Let's not try to perfect it, let's scrap it. From the Heartland Arrowhead website, where they talk about From the Heartland Arrowhead website, where they talk about not going to 50%, among other things, they state, "We suspect there will be cases of COVID within our schools, whether 50% of the students attend, or 100% attend. With that in mind, would we ever get to a point of 100% attendance?" And they are right, that's the key point, they're going to be case regardless. Some of the kids in our district, they get together on virtual days, and the kids visit their friends outside of school, they play sports together, they drive activities together. In fact, the classroom, whether 40% full or 80% full, is probably the least likely place for them to catch anything. Given this, it's pretty clear the health benefits of hybrid are minimal. So what is the benefit of the hybrid model? We get to quarantine a few less kids when somebody tests positive? A substandard educational experience seems like a steep price to pay for that minor benefit. The good news is, it only takes one vote to change the direction, just one person realizes this isn't working, and that the August vote was rushed and was a bad compromise. We're wasting precious time. No one knows what winter will bring with influenza or COVID. But we certainly don't want to look back and say, boy, we should have been back in school five days in September when there was little going on. Our kids were damaged enough last spring, they need to be back in five days, be back five days in person yesterday, or they will continue to fall behind their peers in neighboring districts. The second thing I want to talk about briefly is what looks like excessive quarantines in the grade schools, where we see one class, one case taking out an entire grade level. The reasons I read are lunch and recess are not having masks. The CDC makes it pretty clear that the six-foot, 15-minute rule is independent of masks.
20 seconds.
Since kids are eating in their rooms, at their seats, the lunch tracing is no different than the rest of the day. So that leaves recess as a quarantine-all type of an event. This makes no sense. The one thing my kids could always recall in great detail was exactly who they played with at recess, and it was never both kids, all the kids in both classes, it never was. There's no reason this activity should quarantine every kid at a grade level, and I have my concerns as to why it's being done. Thank you.
Clint is up next, followed by Paul Reese. Welcome, Clint.
Welcome, thank you. My wife and I have been residents of Waukesha for over 25 years, we've had children in the district for over 16 years. My family supports a return to full-time, face-to-face instruction. My family and I would like to thank the four board members who fought hard in August in support of getting our children back to school full-time, face-to-face. Your effort is much appreciated and hasn't gone unnoticed by many in the community. We are, however, disappointed in the actions of the superintendent and those five board members who voted for the hybrid plan at that August meeting, and here is why. After the board voted the all-virtual plan, and thus staying with the full-time, in-person, face-to-face plan previously approved, the superintendent and administration threw out the idea of a hybrid plan concept, which was quickly considered and approved by five board members. I say quickly because many members of the community spent months of preparation, hard work, and discussion, working on a returning-back-to-school plan, face-to-face, full-time. We spent days of consideration on a full-virtual plan, and just mere minutes for the hybrid plan, or as I like to call it, the 40% plan. Why 40%? Because that's all the education our students are currently receiving under that plan. Those board members who voted for the hybrid plan voted for a concept of a plan that had little to no detail included in it. The vote left everyone in the community wondering, A, what just happened, and B, what's next? There's been a mad scramble to put together a hybrid plan, and we are still struggling with the lack of detail in this plan, whether you are a student, parent, teacher, or staff, even to this day. We were told that the virtual plan would be better than the spring. Well, that bar wasn't very hard to jump over because spring was terrible, we all know that. Overall, the virtual plan that I've seen so far through my daughter's education is not going well. Teachers have been left to figure out that part of the plan on their own, there's no consistency. Some are doing a great job, some are doing nothing, and there's many in between. Our children's education is suffering as a result. There needs to be some accountability in how that virtual program is being run. Everyone keeps saying getting back to face-to-face is a goal, but what is our plan of action to do that? Many are hung up on positive tests, or cases, as they like to say, as the holy grail on which to measure our response to this virus. We all know the issues, and heard the stories about the reporting of those. Positive test rates for every group in the state, except for 18 to 24, dominated by college students, has been going down. We need to look further than that. Our students are not the ones at risk, the people in the school are not the ones at risk. Finally, many other districts all over the county, the state, and the country have gone back to school full-time and have done so successfully. We can too in this school district. Please, have the courage to stand up and fight for our kids and our children so they can get the education they deserve.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you very much.
Paul Reese, followed by Kelly Piaszek.
Good evening, just to make the sheeple happy. I was watching the Teaching and Learning Committee tonight, and it occurred to me, when I was watching it, I'm like, the kids are getting three, and giving, even more than Mr. Baumgart was saying, they're getting three out of five days of instruction. They're personal instruction. They're supposed to be getting five days of schooling when they show up. You were supposed to have 180 days of the in-person education. We're getting three out of five days of in-person. The other two days are click the mouse so that I can meet attendance requirements. That's really all you're doing. There's no in-person instruction. If I have a question, if it was me that had a question on that day, either I'm going to wait for a teacher, I'm going to ask Google. What do you think I'm going to do? I'm going to ask Google. You know, it's much easier for that to wait till someone to get back to me, and that's not the instruction that we're supposed to be getting for our kids. The other thing is, I wish I was a teacher, because, man, I'd love to teach high school civics, because what a great lesson the last month's school board meeting would be, on how governments work at every level. Ask the parents once what they want, they don't like it, kick it back, ask them twice, because you don't like what their answer was, so they answer it again. You still don't like what their answer was, so you take some votes on things. You take votes on nothing that people were asked, and you pass, like someone said, quite literally at the 11th hour, it was brought up about hybrid. I hadn't heard nothing about it until Amanda brought it up at the 11th hour. I was astonished, and what a great lesson this is on how governments work at all levels. Is it just what you want, what you expect, and what you ask for are not of a concern to any government body. The other thing is, people talk about science, and what is science? You know, science is supposed to be peer-reviewed. We had the surgeon general tell us that wearing these could be as dangerous, and more dangerous than not wearing them to get the virus, because people do this all the time with them, and you're not supposed to touch things. And it's bad, last week when I came in here without one, Ms. Landish came and handed me one. She handed me it. So whatever she had on her, it came to me, I stuck it in my face. And it's nothing personal, we're not doctors, we're not experts, but scientists tell us this. And then the scientist said, well, you know, this can help. These are completely opposite fields. There's one, this is polar opposite of the other. You have to have a peer-reviewed study to convince me-
30 seconds.
-I'll listen to you, show me the peer-reviewed study of it, and I'll believe it. But that's not what being done here, but people tell me that I don't want to believe in science, that I am a denier if I don't agree with them. To them, I ask two things about science. You want to teach, and you want to make sure everything is purely taught to science? When does life begin? When does life begin? And if that makes a craw in your throat, how many sexes are there, according to science? And if you can't teach to those two principles, then you're not teaching the science, and you're the dullard. Thanks.
Kelly?
First of all, I just want to, like Clint, thank the four board members who have been consistently advocating for five-day face-to-face education. I've written to and spoken to all of you before, expressed some comments last week at the TNL meeting. Tonight's message is going to be pretty simple. In fact, I really just want to talk about metrics, I want to talk about a metric. I'm not interested in the cases, the quarantines, the contact tracing, the staff shortages, the hospitalization rates, and all the other stuff that you throw back at us, parents, when we ask you when the kids are going to go back to school face-to-face. I'm interested in the one metric that really matters, which is educational quality, and I am concerned because over the last several months, that topic never seems to reach the agenda. In January of this year, you sat in this room and celebrated Waukesha North High School students who were able to be successful with a virtual streaming KELC BC model across North and South. You talked about how it was only possible for that to be successful with high-achieving kids, highly-engaged teachers, programs that were supporting them, tutors in the classroom. And what we're talking about now is so distant from that, it can't even be considered to be quality education. I'm not interested in inching back to five-day face-to-face, especially when I hear things like Mondays are non-learning days, and we're adding enrichment activities to keep the kids busy. 12- to 18-year-olds need to be in school five days a week. As you sit here tonight, students in neighboring districts in the same county, same dashboards, are receiving two to three times more in-person education than students in the Waukesha School District in-person education. Those districts set out with plans that would lead to getting kids in school as much as possible, not sending them home at the drop of a hat. I encourage you, please, embrace the primary responsibility as a Board of Education and not as a Board of Virtue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there anyone else in the audience that did not sign up that would like to address the board tonight? Need to give that a little bit of time, Sue, do you want to maybe just check, please? Okay, all right, thank you for checking, appreciate that, Sue. Moving on to our minute approval, we do have several of them. Our August 12th, 2020 regular board meeting, August 12th, 2020, there was an executive session, and then on September 9th, we had a special board meeting that was included in executive session. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I saw move.
By Diane, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thinking about Cory, discussion, changes, questions? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 9-0, Sue. Moving on to our communications, Dr. Seibert, did we have any communications?
We do have.
Okay, and then Diane, would you happen to have a Waukesha Education Foundation report?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have a brief report after a very brief September board meeting. WEF welcomed Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as our newest $2,500 gold sponsor. WEF is so pleased to continue to see strong community support even during these challenging times. Thank you Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for your gold sponsorship. I had reported last month that the weather for the 14th Annual WEF Golf Outing held on August 4th at Western Lakes Golf Club was nearly perfect, and it was an amazing day for the 124 golfers. We held our silent auction online, thanks to our mobile bidding sponsors, Using Handbid, and at our September meeting, WEF reported that Using Handbid and the outdoor venue were a success, generating a net profit of $14,800.
Thanks, yes.
Again, thank you to all who made this fundraiser for the Waukesha Education Foundation possible. The School Communications Committee is preparing our welcome-back newsletter for the staff of the school district of Waukesha. We truly want to thank every one of the teachers and principals and support staff along the way for working doubly hard to prepare for face-to-face experiences for our students and setting up the virtual instruction framework so necessary during quarantine. So thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Voight, appreciate it. Mr. Baumgart, do you have the charter school and program report tonight?
I do, just on-
We're back in action.
Yeah, well, it's strictly the E-Achieve report this evening. I got nosy and started asking for some information about what's going on in E-Achieve, and quite simply overwhelmed. Got some information from Jason and Jody helped with that. Last year, about this time, we had 100 elementary students and 700 secondary students at this point. This year's enrollments, and I have a chart, if you want, I can get these to you over the packet, but I have a chart which has got some real specific and interesting numbers. This year's enrollment's not counting the 100 waitlist students who were approved, I guess, this week, which means they could still be coming on, they're on the list as possible. Currently, E-Achieve Elementary, 267 full-time students, 202 part-time students from the school district, and a few non-school district of Waukesha part-time students. Secondary, 868 are taking classes. Part-time School District of Waukesha COVID, 433, the kids involved with the COVID program, they're because of COVID program. Part-time School District of Waukesha, 520. Part-time Non-School District of Waukesha, 152. Jason says, "From a staffing perspective, the full-time and COVID students are taking between six and eight classes. We are currently looking at 7,500 to 8,000 course enrollments and courses." Total students involved in E-Achieve this year, 2,447, compared to about 800 a year ago, so, big-time use of E-Achieve, and so glad to see that people are getting something out of it.
We knew the numbers were going to be larger, but I didn't know if-
That's a large-
It was going to be that large, yeah, wow.
So, and I had plans to say something about Avid, but there's nothing left to say, so...
Sure, sure, I can appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our, did you have something to say, Kurt? Did you have your hand up? I couldn't tell if you were hand up or if you were-
Well, since you asked, I, you know, I think E-Achieve, it's been probably a 20-year, been about that long, right?
It's been around a while, I don't know, maybe 15, I don't know.
Yeah.
I think it was Joe and Bill and I when we did that, long, long time ago.
2004, 2005?
And, you know, I guess sometimes you have these rare circumstances where I guess it's a good thing that we did it 20 years later, but it has, it has more or less broken even, well, now it's been making money the last five to seven years. So, I think this is a great opportunity that I'm glad we were able to accommodate so many people. I'd like to hear more about the waitlist process, and how those got cleared, and why they were on waitlist, but I'm sure it'll affect our rolling average number, but I think I'll wait for the third Friday count and see what that number actually is, so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our consent agenda, Darren, did we have any gifts to report on this evening?
Yeah, two gifts. Waukesha West received $1,000 from Mary and Steve Henzel. This gift is to be used for esports, math, guidance, and aquaponics as needed. Les Paul Middle School received $5,000 from Northwestern Mutual, matching funds of Paul and Kathleen Omen. This gift is to be used for math, science, and technology integration in the classrooms to provide opportunities for students to explore areas that they may not have an opportunity to otherwise do.
Thank you, thank you for those gifts. Some of these are from repeat, people who have given before too, so thank you very, very much for your generosity. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. There were no expulsions this month, and at this time, does any board member wish to have an item on the consent agenda set aside for separate consideration?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, Kurt, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of two resignations, two retirements, three leaves of absences, and 35 new or modified teacher contracts, which is probably a September record. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Anybody, Amanda, Roddy, any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye, passes 9-0. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, a large portion of those new contracts was for E-Achieve. We had to add significant staff to accommodate the growth in E-Achieve. certainly in HR, if you look at what had to be done in a very short period of time, it was, it was quite phenomenal, so. But, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Moving on to the Superintendent's Report given by Dr. Seibert.
All right, thank you, Mr. Como.
Yes.
So, I have three items on the Superintendent's Report tonight. The first is a recognition, recognition by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' Member Recognition Program for our very own Mrs. Voight. She most recently was recognized by the WASB with Level One recognition, and if you're familiar with that program, it recognizes board members for their efforts in leadership and board development through their program where they award points for board member attendance and involvement at various WASB and NSBA, I should say, programs and events. So, congratulations, Mrs. Voight. Very nice. Now, the second thing I wanted to mention for the Board is we had a monumental day this afternoon. From 4:30 to 6:00, we had the district's first District Equity Leadership Team meeting, led by Dimitri Beekman, and we have representatives from every school in the district. We have some community members, we have a couple members from the Alumni Association, and we have Mrs. Roddy as a Board Representative. That group is going to be tremendously impactful in the school district of Waukesha, and we'll give you more information as that continues to evolve, but this was our first meeting, and we're excited to be highly invested in that very important work. And then the third thing today is every Board meeting, what we will intend to do is give you an update on reopening and where we find ourselves, and so tonight will be the first one of those. So, I'm just going to hook myself up here. Learned how to do this this afternoon. I think it's going pretty well.
Getting connected to Fond du Lac?
Yeah, it's good. So, it is working. That's great. So, what we intend to do today is kind of walk through some data and some of the criteria that we are monitoring as we look at reopening schools from the full face-to-face model at 612. So, to get started, as you'll recall, the only metric that we had to look at was from the CDC, and it was that metric of 14 consecutive days with 5% or lower positive test rates. And there is some doubt on the part of many that we will ever reach that, and I will show you some of the county data here in just a few slides that'll allow you to, to see what that looks like. We also then, right before school, got some guidance from the Department of Health Services at the state of Wisconsin level, and that was the best that we had seen in terms of guidance for moving between levels, and so we adopted that. I had shared that with the Board, and there was guidance there for classrooms or cohort levels, there was guidance for individual schools, and then there was guidance for an entire school district. The challenge with that guidance is that it basically looks at going down a level much more than it does elevating a level, which is the position that we are in when we talk about our secondary. It'll certainly be helpful if we have an outbreak or a number of cases that we have to make some decisions on, but it doesn't certainly provide all the guidance that we need. So, we also, as Waukesha County, we have a great partnership, and we'll talk about how we meet every week, but we don't have necessarily the guidance from them that some other counties have that tell us or guide us in that way as well. So, what we have been looking at, and what we're going to show you today, how we're looking at, is some internal and external factors that are very important to the school district being able to continue to provide the level of service that we are and determining whether or not we need to step down a level or go up a level. And so, the first one that we'll walk through is, actually, they'll go in opposite order, but the three things are student and staff absence rates, the number of cases that we have in COVID, as well as the number of quarantines, and so we'll show you how we're monitoring that. We also look at our substitute fill rates in various departments for teachers, for our instructional assistants, and for our health rooms, and our overall staffing capacity as that's very important to be able to operate. And then we also look at the trajectory and the increase or decrease in COVID cases in Waukesha County. So, with all of that being said, we're going to start with the last one, which is the Waukesha County Dashboard, which I know you're all familiar with. This is a screenshot of what it looked like today, and so we monitor this every single day, and we meet with the county every Wednesday to talk about our individual data and trends within Waukesha County. So, right now in Waukesha County, we're averaging about 40 COVID cases per day. You can see on that particular chart that the seven-day rolling average for positive tests is 8.99% as of today, and you can also see in that confirmed age group bracket down on the bottom that the group of kids that would be from 10 to 19 is the third highest group. The 18 to 29-year-olds are the ones that are really skyrocketing, and you see that within the universities and colleges currently. So, we look at that every single day, and we also look at the cases by overall municipality. So, when we look at the city of Waukesha on this particular slide, we see we have 102 active cases currently in Waukesha County, an accumulative amount of 1,384. But then more specifically, what's really been a nice addition to the new dashboard is where we can search the number of cases by school district. And so, all of the districts in Waukesha County, you can click on them, and you get the number of cases for school-aged populated children, and right now, within the Waukesha School District boundaries, there are 15 active cases. Now, what's important to know about that data is that those aren't necessarily all of our students, those could be homeschooled students, those could be private school students, anybody that fits that age range. So, we look at that certainly every day, and then we also look at the Data Trends tab of the Waukesha County Dashboard. And what that gives us, up in the top right corner, is the positive results and the trend over the last 14 days. And so, in the last 14 days, the trend of positive case rate was 8.5%, if you would add up all of those dots. So, you see it kind of goes down, and then it goes up, and then it goes down, and then it goes up, and it's very sporadic. So, it certainly, as when we talked yesterday with, actually this morning, it's Wednesday, with the county, Ben Jones talked about the fact that we're under 10% is a good thing, but certainly we want to continue to get lower in order for, to feel more comfortable as an overall county. So, those are the pieces we look at on the Waukesha County Dashboard. Then, we shared with you last week, we debuted on Friday, our own district dashboard that Mary Jo worked on with support from Mr. Shloman, and that updates every hour on the hour based on the data that we are collecting within the school district, and we're able to look at the number of students that are isolated. And when we talk about isolated, that means they have confirmed positive COVID cases, and then we also can look at the number of students that are quarantined, which means they have close contact or have had some reason that they need to be quarantined for a period of time. So, as of the time that we printed this out or put this slide together, which was earlier today, we had, I believe that's a six, isolated cases, and we had 147 quarantined students. Then, we do the same thing for our staff, and you can see the same data on that dashboard that we have on our website, and there, I believe that number is also a six for isolated cases, and my eyes are not quite what I was hoping, and we have 41 for the quarantine. The bifocals are just around the corner. I can tell that. So, we monitor that as well. So, with that being said, we also then, like I talked about earlier, we look at and keep track of, with Esther in Mrs. Thede's office, our substitute fill rates for three different groups. And so, in this particular slide, what we're showing you is the number of absences or vacancies that we needed to have substitutes for in this year compared to last year, and the number that went unfilled. And so, when you look at this particular data, you would say it looks pretty good, like we are doing quite well at this point with being able to fill the substitute teacher positions. But with that being said, I'm going to ask Sharon just to give you a few examples of some of the things that maybe go unseen as we're, as we're looking at this data and some of the things that perhaps even got pointed out during the HR meeting today. Sure.
Actually, Ellie mentioned, gave you a scenario, it was, it was hard to follow because it was so detailed, but just as an example, in two of our schools where we have several staff members quarantined, one situation happened over the weekend, so they had hours and hours and hours and days and two days to plan and prepare to get really creative for how we could cover the number of teacher absences, which COVID-related and non-COVID-related was up to, I think, 16 in that building. So, there's a lot of really creative work that went into play, utilizing teachers, as many resources as we could versus just putting in an absence and having a sub pick up the absence. So, they're trying to save the subpool, really, for these last-minute absences that we might need, and they're really working on planning creatively to cover these longer-term absences. And the same thing with another school that was mentioned this evening. It's a lot of pulling of other staff to cover, because sometimes bringing somebody in to cover for three days, the amount of training that you would need or technology needed just to get them up and running, the other people just say, "I'd rather do it, do it myself." So, while the subfill rates are actually probably better than last year at the moment, I want to be very clear that when a number of staff members are out in a building, these buildings have just worked magic to get some great coverage, but, I mean, it's, it's difficult and it's not sustainable.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. All right, let's move on to the substitute fill rate for special education assistance. This one is not as promising of a picture, and part of the challenge with this is we lost a number of special education assistance prior to the beginning of the school year for a variety of reasons, and when you compare last year to this year, you can see that a vast majority of our substitute requests within this particular job range are not being filled on a consistent basis. So, I'll allow and ask, I shouldn't say allow, ask Dr. Cook, if he would, give us a few details that might help illuminate why this data looks like it looks.
Yeah, we, again, like Dr. Seibert said, we had, from, I think it was August when the Board approved the plan, to the beginning of the school year, we had 73 staff members resign, and many of those fell into the healthroom clerical pool as well as the special ed assistance, and currently, I think we have 35 people who are, 35 positions currently between the elementary and the secondary that are not filled. Among those positions, or, you know, included in that have been three rounds, I think it's been three rounds of interviews where we've had teams of principals in, trying to get candidates in. It's a position right now that is not, people are not seeking that particular position out, so we are having a very difficult time trying to fill those with applicants, just to get the applicants in, and then interview those applicants and determine if they're quality employees. So, that has created a strain, you know, to Ellie's example, when, when you look at the, how we were using those individuals, one, to provide, you know, the IEP support that's, that's listed in the IEPs, and then to back up special education teachers, and then to support the healthroom, and then to support the isolation room in the school, dominos start to fall when, when those positions, one, aren't filled, or, two, they need to be utilized in a different capacity. So, our special ed aides that we have in the district have been extremely flexible, they've gone from school to school to try to help out, to, to fill vacancies, but, but going into the school year, and currently, we still have some schools that are minimally staffed in this area, just enough to get, get by for the time being.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. All right, and then the last group that we're monitoring with substitute fill rate is our clerical or healthroom staff, and this would be another area where we're not doing as well as we would like to, and to Dr. Cook's points, very similar criteria here from what you just described.
Yeah, we, we currently are actually contracting the healthroom clerical people, our, our assistants, who get extra training from our staff, so they'll get trained in diabetic cares and, and certain allergy responses, medication distribution, so they get a higher level of training than, say, an average classroom aide would. And we have five positions that were vacant at the beginning of the year. We were able to move some people around to fill three, and we've actually had to contract with an agency for two nurses to step in. One of the, the challenges with the healthroom clerical is the amount of training that goes in, so for diabetic care alone, you're looking at a four-hour class at Children's Hospital in diabetic care, and then about 10 hours of onsite training and observation by our nurses. Our nurses have to delegate the, their license essentially through these healthroom people, and so they have to have a level of comfort with the competency of the individual in taking care of diabetic care, for instance. And so, when we, when we look at the, kind of the specialized cases around, you know, both our healthroom and our, and our aides, we, we were down five healthroom assistants, 31 special ed aides, but the key components of these two positions are the number of people who are trained in diabetic care, which was 12. We had lost 12 people in that area. We lost 10 people who were trained in G-tube feeding care, three individuals who were trained in oxygen administration, then we lost one person who was trained in, in hot suction of student who needed to, you know, have that, the mucus extracted. So, this has caused, you know, the strain on how the schools are operating to begin the school year. It's important to note, too, that at the secondary level where we have 50, essentially 40 to 50% attendance, we're still working extremely hard just to cover about half of the kids that would regularly show up there, and because we're covering them on a, you know, an A-day, B-day basis. So, the staff that we have right now is able to cover 40 to 50% of the kids that are in the building.
So, if someone's watching this and they're looking for a position, who would they contact? Would that be you, Sharon? So, go on to the school district website and reach, reach out to you? Okay?
Good point, yes. All right, thank you, Dr. Cook. All right, and then just the last slide that we have for you, when, it's very early in the school year, obviously, it's day 11, so right now, compared to last year, we are at 93% overall attendance from a student perspective versus 97 a year ago. Part of that might be what was discussed in, by the nurses in the HR committee this evening. We, we do believe that parents are taking this very seriously, and if their child isn't feeling well, they are keeping them home, and I don't remember who said it, I think it was Dr. Cook, that this is not the time to get the, the heart, what was the term you used?
The Iron Man or the Iron Woman Award.
Yes, like if you're not feeling well, it's, it's best to stay home and best to get healthy and not force yourself to, to go to school or work. So, that probably explains a piece of that.
That daily attendance for all virtual versus online, on face-to-face, or is that just the face-to-face? What are, what are we looking at up there?
I think we're, my guts is we're looking at face-to-face on this when we asked for the data, because I...
So, we don't know...
The kids have to sign in on the virtual, but I don't know if we're tracking that in here.
Okay.
Do you know, Dr. Cook?
We did look at it grade by grade, just everybody who is enrolled in the district. So, in the, kind of the school by school, day by day, you'll see some schools that have, you know, 70-some percent attendance, and some schools, like E-Achie, that's reporting 100% attendance right now. So, so we are a little bit scattered, but when you look at the average, it's what it is, is presented.
This includes virtual.
This does include virtual students, yes.
That was a concern I had. Thank you.
Good, thank you for the clarification, too. Appreciate it. So, we look at this data every single day, and we monitor it on, on dashboards and on spreadsheets, and we wanted to just kind of paint the picture for you of the things that we're looking at as we continue to, to think about these decisions. We've talked, Mr. Como and I, several times, and certainly the goal is to get every child back into school. We know that's the best model, right? We want that for our kids, we want that for our families, we want that for our staff, and we just want to do that in a way that is as safe as possible so that once we get into school, we can stay into school consistently. So, with that being said, we, we've had the conversation ongoing, Mr. Como and I, about when we have situations like a hill crest or a lull, we're able to administratively make those decisions in working with the county to quarantine a class or, or make an adjustment to a, a particular grade level or a school. We also have talked about administratively, if we, as we look at this data, would feel we'd have the ability to bring a grade level back or a couple of grade levels back, perhaps administratively, we could, we could do that too when the data was signaling and our staffing patterns were signaling that that made sense for us. But we've also discussed, as we put in the update last week, that we believe it should be a full Board decision when we, you believe we are ready, and, and we believe collectively, hopefully, that we are ready to go back 612, five days a week as an entire system. So, we thought it would be nice for you to at least see the pieces that we're looking at. We can share this presentation with you, so you have it. We'll do something similar to this every Board meeting, depending... ready, and we believe collectively, hopefully, that we are ready to go back six, 12, five days a week as an entire system. So we thought it would be nice for you to at least see the pieces that we're looking at. We can share this presentation with you, so you have it. We'll do something similar to this every board meeting, depending, I would say, throughout the whole year, regardless of what model we're in, just so we can keep monitoring trends and monitoring our data. And I think more than anything, we'd just like to have the opportunity, the cabinet has been tremendous to work with on this, you've been tremendous to work with on this, there's no easy answers here, but try to answer any questions you have or any other data that you think would be valuable for you to have as we continue to work down this path together. Mr. Baumgart?
Well, I appreciate seeing that and getting an, beginning to get an understanding about what we're dealing with and what we have there. And it causes questions. I mean, there's no question about, about that causes questions. Anyway, but, you know, I actually have developed more of an interest in the staffing than maybe in the kids, because as I hear what we heard earlier from Ellie, and what Joe has shared with us, and you've shared with us, to convert to more face-to-face, in my mind, is challenging us to find a way to keep everybody healthy, because we're not going to have the staff available to do it. I mean, that's just, that's my observation as of this point. Almost a panic about how are we going to get enough people to get all of these students in classes healthy when we are seeing, both the hybrid and the five-day face-to-face, we are seeing COVID showing up, you know, whether it's isolation or whether it's contact. We've got kids quarantined, we've got staff quarantined, and we're only a part of the way there to filling up the classrooms. So, and we're already running short of staff. So that, you have just generated more concern on my part, which I appreciate. I think that's important, that we pay attention to those things.
Kurt?
Yeah, we included in our HR.
That your mic?
We included in our HR report, we had the nurses present, so we wouldn't take any, put any extra burden on HR. And I'll include that report. I'll ask them to put that report in the Friday packet, and we're planning to do that again at the next meeting, just to keep on top of the health issues. But there's a couple of things staffing-wise and the question I have. I went to every elementary school the first day or two. It was great. I mean, I saw all the parents doing, all the teachers doing wonderful things, all the kids happy. The kids were doing everything they should be doing. I mean, the first two days, the commitment to safety and health was great. But one of the things I saw was, in the case of where we were short an elementary teacher, for whatever reason, we'd sometimes combine two classrooms, and one elementary teacher would maybe be teaching as many as 30 kids. Now, they created this classroom space, so they were adequately spaced. But if we were trying to optimize our goal, we would, if we could have gotten another elementary teacher or two, we wouldn't have had to do that, I assume. And I assume we are struggling, and we have to make adjustments like that until we get things settled down. Is that correct, Dr. Seibert?
Yes, that's correct. We, on the first day, I actually thought we were fully staffed on the first day, so I'd have to look back at the data and see. But we would prefer not to combine classes if we would need, right, that would be not our first choice to combine classes.
And the other thing, being at the schools, I mean, we had one new teacher that was hired like the day before, you know, for the elementary level, and that's how urgent it was to try and find staff, you know, for a full face-to-face in elementary, which is great. And then in this report will be the staffing comments that Mr. Cook made. You'll have the numbers on that. The biggest impact has been in special ed and health, as far as trying to fill those positions. And if I understood Mr. Cook correctly, if we were to go back, I mean, if we were at full face-to-face today, we wouldn't be staffed adequately in those job descriptions to cover the entire population of full face-to-face today in those special positions.
Yeah, we've looked at that, and the level of education that we would want to provide would be substantially diminished to the kids who were there face-to-face. We, when you look at being down 21 aides at the secondary level, you're looking at three or four people possibly per school. And then that, the impact that those people can have with the kids that they would be serving would be much, much less. You would, you'd be moving past an inclusion model, you'd be pulling kids into a special education classroom. You'd be really working through different models that we know aren't the best models for instruction.
So I assume the priority for us as a district is to try and get those positions filled so that we can get back.
Yeah, we're posted on indeed, and we are posted on we can for those positions. So interestingly enough, just an aside, for the contact tracer position, we had about 150 applicants for the positions of working in special ed, as a special education aide. We're not getting enough applicants to fill those positions.
Those are just the points, since you're going to cover this, I wanted to make sure everybody wants to be back face-to-face. We've got to be staffed for it. I think in the HR meeting, our biggest concern as far as COVID impact right now is the impact it's had on staff more than it's had on children in terms of staffing availability, as illustrated by the example given earlier tonight by one of the speakers. You're basically juggling balls, and it's not sustainable, is what I heard HR say. So somehow or another, we're going to have to figure out how to make this all work in order for us to get back to face-to-face, 100% face-to-face.
That's Mr. Montiel.
Thank you, Mr. Como. I think it's undeniable that there is fear in our community about COVID. I don't think anybody denies that. What I'm trying to wrap my head around is, over these last number of months, five, six, seven months, what else can we do as a school district to try to alleviate those fears? If I heard the numbers, I think there were 73 resignations this year. I may have missed a number, but how much in total are we down in staff? Does someone know the total number by chance, or you've got a ballpark?
Karen?
It's mostly the assistants that Joe is referring to. When it comes to teaching staff, I think we're 100% staffed with teachers. So it's mostly, right now, still filling those assistants, which that was basically, most of them exited in August. So it was also timing of filling those positions.
So that's special education aides?
AIDS, regular ed aides, healthroom, clerical.
And some clerical, yes.
But we have 100% of our teachers.
Teaching staff is, I mean, hired, yes, as of.
Okay. Very close. All right, fair enough.
Couple hours ago.
So I, as a board member, as a citizen, as a parent, I'm trying to look at the level of fear and what we're doing as a district, you know, going to hybrid, going, you know, the whole discussions we've had. And in my mind, does that fear justify what we're doing? So I looked at the county dashboard, I looked at the school board dashboard, the school district's dashboard. And I've heard over the last number of weeks and months that school district Waukesha is going to have an outbreak, Waukesha County's having an outbreak, that if we put kids together in a school without proper social distancing, or even with social distancing, we're going to have an outbreak that's going to affect the community. I looked at the numbers. All of Waukesha County has an infection rate of .131%. Not 13.1, .131. There's 533 cases in all of Waukesha County. There's 404,000 people. School District Waukesha has 15 cases. If you norm that by our approximate student population of 12,500.
We have five. It's 15 for.
Correct.
But that, within the school, but that might include home, schools, CMH?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
If you do the math, it works out to be about the same. So, yeah, within the school district of Waukesha's boundaries, there's 27,000 kids at the age of 17, I'm sorry, 18. But then you look at those numbers, the school district of Waukesha's infection rate is about .12%. If you look at Waukesha County hospitalizations, it's .0049%. If you look at the students in the school district of Waukesha, which Mr. Como just brought up, five students out of about 12,500, that's an infection rate of .04%. So I'm trying to wrap my head around losing all of these aides, and then how is that, how does that match up with that low of an infection rate? I mean, it's staff in school district of Waukesha, there are six cases. Students, there's five. So I'm not seeing an outbreak. I'm not seeing problems doing the, you know, that a lot of people predicted. The goal is, as people mentioned, is to try to keep everybody healthy. If you look at these numbers, there are people who are sick. But if you look at the numbers as comparison to the infection rate, the population, I don't know how we can justify what we're doing as a school district, keeping kids home two days a week, three days a week, doing this virtual learning. In my mind, it doesn't add up. If you look at the city of Waukesha, there was a mention of that there's 102 cases. That's a lot of cases. But the population's 72,549. That's an infection rate of .14%. These numbers don't, in my mind, justify what we're doing. I understand why we're doing it. The problem I have with the staffing issue is, is the staffing issue more important than the students in the classroom? I don't think so. Because if we have roughly 100% of teachers here, and I know that's going to change, people are going to get quarantined, they're the boots on the ground, they're the soldiers that are teaching our students. The most important people in any school building, or even Lindholm, are the students. Our obligation legally is to educate these kids. Our moral obligation is to make sure they get the best education as possible. The reaction that we're getting, the mitigation that we're doing, I just don't know what else we can do to make that certain segment of the population saying, "This is so scary and so bad that we have to keep our kids home." Think about what we've done as a district, all the mitigation efforts. First, it was masking. There are people who didn't like masking. I wasn't a big fan. I came around and said, "It's justified." Social distancing, we've done it. Spraying the classrooms, we've done it. I don't know what else we can do as a district to try to make employees, students, families comfortable to come back to school. At some point, I think the district and this board has to make a decision. Enough's enough. We have to look at the numbers. The percentages of people who are infected is so, so low. We're not seeing this gigantic spike. I remember back in the August 12th meeting, there was discussion that the rates are going up. I went and looked at it a week later. Immediately after the August 12th meeting, the rates went down. So, I mean, I could go on forever, and no one's going to want to hear that, but I just think if you balance, our job is to balance. The primary goal is educate the kids. Try to keep people as healthy as reasonable possible. We're doing it. There's not an outbreak in the school district of Waukesha. These numbers are comparable. I got a little concerned about moving targets, too. We talked about 5%, we talked about other stuff, and now we're talking about staffing, which is a reality. But we've got our teachers there, and we've got our students there. So I guess that's, that's what I had to say.
So that's, that's why there's many factors, really, that we're looking at here, the ones that Dr. Seibert went through. And there's a couple different aspects of approving doing more face-to-face, a couple different approaches of approving more face-to-face and/or closing down classes. So as Dr. Seibert had explained, administratively, we've had a couple of classes where we've had to shut down. We thought it was in our best interest to do that. At the same time, as administration continues to look at the data every day, we may find that there are maybe a grade at a certain school that we want to say, "Hey, it's looking pretty good. Why don't we bring this group back face-to-face?" So kind of stick the toe in the water kind of approach. And if we ever get to that point where the full board, and there will be a time where this full board will come together and have a vote on face-to-face, I'm not predicting when that's going to be. I think we need to have this play out for a little bit longer, kind of see where we're at, take a look at, take a look at what the data's showing us. And we cover many more data points than what, you know, the CDC had recommended, the 5% 14 days. So we're looking at more things. And I think we're trying to take a more comprehensive perspective on it. And so that's, that's the approach that we're taking right now. We're not at the point to have the full board get together and bring everyone back face-to-face. We haven't reached that point yet. When that will be, I don't know. Could it be a week from now? Could it be two weeks from now? Could it be six months from now? I don't know. But we're only two weeks into it, and I suggest that we keep looking at the data. And now we've had an incubation period for a certain period of time, where now we're going to see if there's, now we've had people back face-to-face, see what that data looks like. Did you have something to add, Dr. Seibert? I'm sorry. Mrs. Reincheck?
I'm just wondering.
Your mic?
It's on. Can you hear me now? So when building supply stores, grocery stores, warehouses, online stores needing drivers, when all of these places needed people, they gave an incentive, and they gave raises, and they wanted people to work there. Are we doing that? I know at one time, we had tech ed teachers in high demand, and we were paying them a lot more because we needed them, and we needed to recruit them. Are we putting something out there that says, "We need you, and we will bump up your salary, we will bump up whatever stipend we give you"? Are we doing that to try to seek these aides? And if you're not, do you need approval from us? Do we need to vote on something so that we can get the people in here that we need?
Do you want to address that?
I would. And then just, the two resignations that came in on the addendum, we have not hired for those. Just when I said 100% staff, I'm like, "Well, not quite." So wanted to clarify that. And no, we have not looked to increase assistant pay throughout the district.
Okay, because I know we've heard in the past that because they didn't get benefits and because we had to let them go in the springtime, I'm sure they're not knocking at our door to come back. So now, in a time when we need them, and at a time that they could get sick, they could be exposed to this, I think it's a time to discuss it and to maybe offer something. If we need them, and that's, that's the factor that's not going to have us open because we don't have help, then we need to do something.
We did have an estimate of that done in the last couple of years.
I know, that was for health insurance.
I don't recall.
But not offering health insurance, just maybe not just the $100 a day.
That could definitely increase people who would apply, is what you're saying, right?
Well, not offering the health insurance, but what I'm saying, if we're offering $100 a day, and I forgot what it was, I know subs is a little over that, let's say it's 100. If it's 150 or something, if it's not double pay, but can we do something?
To increase the rate, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Montiel.
Thank you, Mr. Como. Ms. Reincheck's point, I think, is excellent. We have a fund balance of, someone could correct me, 27 million, and I know it's, you know, we keep that there for the rainy day. I've been told, and I agree, that that is not for ongoing costs because it's unwise. But I think I've heard numerous times in other meetings, that is there for things that we need to get done instant. I think Mr. Bryant talked about using some of that in one of my first meetings to pay extra to teachers. If I, I don't know if I remember correctly, but if we need to hire more people, if we need to pay them more to solve this problem, to fix what we're seeing on those slides, let's do it. I know enrollment's down, but we have the money there. And if we're talking how many people besides, well, how many people did we lose? I don't remember if I got a number.
You're talking about aides? Was it 78? And I think we're still short 38-ish?
Low 30s.
Low 30s?
Okay. So we're not talking a tremendous amount of money compared to what's in the fund balance. If that's what it takes to get our schools up and running, because you take that on top of everything else we're doing, and I'm not aware of anything else we can do, I think people who are offered more money, more incentives, are going to look at the stats I did and say, "Okay, what's my risk?" It is very, very low. It is not even 1%. It's 1/10 of a percent or less. I think Ms. Reincheck's suggestion is excellent. And I think I would like to have that go forward. I don't know if we're the only two, but I don't know why we wouldn't look into that.
And that would be something that we would probably standardize across all aides, not just newly hired aides.
Correct. It's worth the money, in my opinion. What else are we going to spend it on? That is more an urgent need.
Orion?
Yeah, I just, there's a couple of things I just want to correct. Yes, mine was the same thing you're talking about. Mine was for hiring more teachers to keep. same thing you're talking about. Mine was for hiring more teachers to keep class sizes down. You're for using more money to be able to fulfill those shortages we have. It's similar. There's no difference.
Yes, sir.
You know, one of the things that I, and, you know, when we talk these numbers and percentages, and if it's your child that you're dealing with who has that risk, they don't care what the percentages are. And there are some families I know in this district that are very happy with this relative to their situation. Just as many, I mean, just like there's some families that are very unhappy, there are some families, because of their risk factors, for them and their child, that are glad that we came up with whatever we came up with, right? So, it's not all that easy to deal by percentages because everybody has their own unique case, just like those who want us to go 100% back face-to-face tomorrow. I understand that. There's people on the other side, too, that they have health issues, they have family issues, and, you know, there's concerns on that. And we've lost some retirements of staff because of that as well. I think we're, we should be open-minded about all this, and across all constituents. And I don't have a problem with that. I will say, I'm pleased with the efforts our staff has made to make this work. I'm pleased with the efforts a lot of the parents have done to make this work. And, you know, when I go to by the elementary schools, which are 100% face-to-face, I think those parents tell us every day their concerns about COVID, because so many of them don't let their kids ride the bus anymore. They haul them to school to avoid the risk of them being on the bus. And so, I don't think we're past the total fear concern for a lot of our parents, but what I will say about the parents is they're very pleased with how Waukesha is doing the contact tracing, being attentive to the situation. And I've never been one to feel comfortable with compromising on safety when it comes to staff or students. And I'm just pleased that the progress we have made on the safety side has been recognized by a lot of the families in our community. And I want to compliment our staff for that because you set the tone with the face masks, the shields. I mean, you need to set that tone for people to feel safe, and I think we've done that.
Mr. Romo?
Yeah, Bill? Yeah. I appreciate something Kurt said there about the fact that we are getting very positive responses from a number of families that don't object to the hybrid version. It's working well for some of them. It's obviously not working well for others. I can't figure out why it would be that extremely different, although I have my thoughts. But that's going well. The elementary program, other than the fact that that's been a source of problems, health problems, that we should remember is there, you know, we don't have that with the virtual elementary kids, because there's, how many, about 900 kids taking virtual at the elementary level? That's no small number. That's pretty significant, and they're getting along fine with it. Yeah, it's not the best thing. There's not a board member here that doesn't wish we could have everybody in school every day of the week. That's something people don't seem to understand. That's not what we're doing. We want to get to the five-days-a-week program, but we want to do it for education and for safety. Not just education, that's our requirement, it's the safety of those kids and the safety of those teachers. And that's the thing that is still at risk. Even if we have enough teachers to go around, we're short of a lot of other, 30-some-odd people short. And every time we have a teacher in a quarantine, now you've got 25 or so kids that don't have a teacher. So, there's a lot of those things that have to be resolved, and there's a lot of things that people are happy with. Just recently, a couple of them come through with, "We're doing just fine. We've only been out of two weeks. We're doing just fine. Don't start screwing with it. Don't mess it up." You know, and that makes a lot of sense. It's growing. It's moving. Hopefully, it's moving in the right direction. Now, relative to the, can we provide an incentive? I don't know. There's several things we have to talk about there. One is, if you do it for the assistance, then you're going to have to do it to everybody.
I have a recommendation on that. So, we're in our budgetary, do you mind, Bill, if I hop in on that, just because it's...
Go ahead.
It's been brought up, that's the third time now. So, we're in our budgetary process. We don't have a final budget for this year. We do have fund balance, and our administration, I think, is listening to this discussion. And I think one of the things that we should be able to do and have you guys do is take a peek at what we could do along those lines and what are the ramifications from a cost perspective. So, we don't have that information right now. The information that we had done a few years ago was dealing with health insurance, wasn't necessarily dealing with a rate increase. So, we're still in the midst of our budget development process, so our administration could hopefully put together something for us as we move forward with that budgetary.
But don't forget how many years we've struggled to get the fund balance back to where it is. In our years, we had significant issues with that. So, I'm not saying...
That is correct.
I'm not saying it's not possible. Just don't forget.
But that's what it's for, times like this, at least my opinion. Yes, Kurt?
I just want to also say, you know, one of the reasons why the elementary, first of all, I do believe elementary schools or elementary children are much lower risk and could be more successful with elementary, just for that alone. But one of the reasons that this worked out so well, that it was workable, was the number of parents that chose virtual as a percentage basically doubled from what the survey said. So, once they knew that we were going back 100% face-to-face, the number of parents that were concerned enough to go virtual basically doubled. So, it just tells you that, first of all, we should thank those parents because it allowed us to staff up and create a little bit safer learning environment for the other children. But it just tells us that the cooperation we had from the community as a whole was significant in terms of us being as successful as we have been to date. And we should recognize that, and I think that's something to be proud of in our community.
Now, Bill, I had interrupted you. Did you have any other point that you wanted to make?
No, I guess, I'm okay.
Apologize for that.
There was one other thing I was going to still say, that just be careful. There's a lot of angles to providing an incentive and then taking it away at a later date, or whatever you're going to do, you know. Is it a one-time thing? Is it an ongoing thing? All those things come into play.
Could maybe be a COVID stipend?
Yeah.
I think Mrs. Voight was next.
I think it's a matter of supply and demand. You know, we obviously don't have people that are interested in applying right now, so we need to come up with some kind of a COVID incentive or whatever to make that position more appealing to the people that, you know, could potentially help us to fill that need.
I think Mrs. Reincheck was next.
Thank you. I was just listening to Kurt and wanting to interject something. The 900 that are choosing virtual, it's not because all 900 are, have the fear of the kids being in school. It's the inconvenience of the inconsistency of the days. And I've spoken with them. They have childcare issues, and to have somebody watching their child, taking them to school, or then staying at home, or taking them to school, they can't do. They're waiting for the five days a week, but because of childcare issues, there's a childcare worker that's watching kids, and that childcare worker is going to be the online schoolteachers for all of them at one house. They're doing this in different places, and so it's not all because of the health issues or the safety. It's because of the inconvenience of what's happening.
Just real quickly, I mean, I'm only referring to the elementary, which is a five-day-a-week face-to-face. Now, I guess maybe that 900 number was not just elementary.
I think, Jody?
It was 900 elementary.
900, it was, Jody? 900 in elementary?
They're not facing that inconsistency.
Okay.
Heard to Karen as elementary. It's secondary level where we have that problem.
Well, inconsistency is one of those, it's one of those factors that we need to be looking at. We don't want to be in this model for two weeks, go to another model for two weeks, go to another model after that for two weeks. So, that's part of our formula two here, is trying to figure that, trying to figure that out. How do we go from where we're at now to another model, to progress to ultimately face-to-face, five days a week at all levels? It's tricky. Yes, Greg? I appreciate the hand right in front of your face because I noticed that. I can't see it to the side, just so you know.
Yes. I really like the idea that Karen had, and then Cory seconded, just to explore the possibility of providing incentives, and then you summarizing that to Joe like you did. I was interested if there are any other recommendations from any administrative staff that they would like to toss out to the board for us to consider, even out our piece of time, to help in whatever way we can to, you know, get to that point of getting kids back at higher rates sooner. Anything from administration other than that has been mentioned tonight that they would like to share with us?
Just a couple of thoughts on the aides, and I guess I'd like to start out by reminding you, those resignations came essentially on September 1st. So, these positions have not been open a long time. Now, we're struggling to get applicants, so I'm not going to say that they're out there, but keep in mind of the timing of all that. I think Bill brought up, and for those of you who've been on the board a long time, maybe you've gone through that, where if you start identifying one employee group over the other employee groups, I'm not saying they'll leave because of that, but it sends a message. And then on the aides thing in particular, and I think Sharon and I have had some very brief conversations about this, and it does, in my mind, require board approval, so we would have to come back to you. But let's just focus on the aides and say, it's not only the hiring, but I also think we should build in something to build retention. Because if we're given stipends to hire, but they're walking out the other door, you're on a treadmill then. So, I don't have an idea for that, but I think it's something we should factor into that math. And again, we have set aside, if you remember, we had a solid fiscal year because we shut down last year. It wasn't great fiscal management or anything. We do have some reserves, and some of those are being expended, but we put those dollars aside to hopefully get us or help us get through not only this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, not knowing. And then we'll just have to prioritize the expenditure of those funds, so hopefully that's helpful.
Mr. Montiel?
Thank you. And I'm not trying to waste money, and I don't think anybody's suggesting that, but I look at this and say, "Look, let's be solution-focused. If one of the big metrics is staffing, let's fix it. Let's do everything we can to fix it. Maybe it's impossible, but let's at least try." It's the same we did, same as we did with the mitigation efforts. It was evolving, and everybody got on board, and we did it. I didn't like Plexiglas. I went through a number of schools like Mr. Bryant did. It's perfectly fine. Do I prefer a world where the students don't have Plexiglas? Absolutely. Do I prefer a world that we can have fully-staffed aides and everybody else? Sure. If it's going to cost us more money, that's fine with me. As far as other groups not getting increases too, that's going to be problematic, but I think everybody can hopefully appreciate, this is an emergency. It's a pandemic. It's all these things that everybody's saying, so it's going to take extraordinary measures to fix that. And next year, you know, it's going to be an issue. COVID is not going away. There is no herd immunity that we know of. There's not a vaccine on the horizon that we know of. If logic follows that, we're all going to get infected. So, at what point do we try to solve what is in front of us and realize that in the future may cause a problem? Well, we've got to solve this now. I'm not suggesting anybody say not, but I think Ms. Reincheck's idea is great. So, I'd like to see, and it sounds like that may be coming, how much would it be to just give a stipend? How much would it be to increase their pay permanently? Same with subs, and then we can figure it out. The budget process, I don't remember a budget number, but, you know, I would, not that I'm suggesting this, but for the sake of argument, open up the budget. If it's going to cost us $500,000 or whatever it is to get this done, boy, you know, go through the budget. I'm sure we can find the money, even if we can't use the reserve fund, or I'm sorry, the...
Fund balance.
Thank you. Fund balance.
Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, you know, look, we're going to solve the aid problem one way or another. We have to solve it because someday, our expectation is we'll be back face-to-face, and we're going to have to have those people, okay? Whether we do it face-to-face tomorrow or the next day, we're going to have to have those people. So, we're going to solve that. My suggestion is rather than hashing this out of the board meeting like it's the solution to our problem to get back to face-to-face, I think it's more appropriate for us to deal with it at an HR committee meeting, working with HR, and so we can put the type of thought and consideration into it instead of circling the wagons here amongst all of us. I mean, I think it would work better that way, once Sharon catches her breath a little bit.
So, technically, just so our audience understands, this has been agendized as a discussion item and not as an action item. So, we don't have the ability just to toss out motions right now. And we have to be pretty focused on announcing on the agenda. If we are going to have a motion for some sort of action, we have to be as clear as we possibly can with that. So, but there's, the administration is listening to this discussion. I think they've heard loud and clear that we need to move forward on resolving various issues, actually, that we've talked on. We've kind of honed in on this one towards the end of our discussion, but there's many issues. And that's the whole purpose of this time, is for us to get ideas and feedback, what we've heard from our constituents, from our teachers, from, you know, this is kind of like a brainstorming session, essentially, where we're at, getting those ideas out. So, our administration can hear that input. And just so people understand, those of you who email us or call us, we also talk to administration, forward those kinds of suggestions on to administration. So, we are constantly trying to get the information to our administration that's going to help us move forward with solving a variety of issues that are before us. So, and we thank everybody for that input, and we thank everybody for following, you know, the mitigation standards that we put in place. We thank people for taking that very seriously, and I think it's been going very well. I wasn't sure how that was going to work at first, but it takes all of us working together to get through this. Dr. Seibert?
No, I just wanted to say thank you. I think you put it very well, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Any other topics that we want to share at this time on reopening? We covered a lot. And again, if there's other things that, ideas, keep sending them to our administrators. We'll keep moving forward on this, and we'll figure out what those agendized items look like through our committee meetings, through the full board meeting, and if a special Board of Education meeting needs to be called. You know, we've been calling them for, a number of them for many months now, not just on COVID, but the hiring of our new superintendent. So, when we need to do that, we will do that also. So, thank you, everyone, for your input tonight. Is there any other part to your report tonight, Dr. Seibert?
No, that will finalize the report, Mr. Romo. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Appreciate it.
Thought I'd give you the last word, though.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our committees. We're going to start with our Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Mr. Dietz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on September 9, 2020, 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom here at Lindholm. There is one action item and two discussion information items that appear on the agenda for Teaching and Learning CD. The one action item is for the approval of the at-risk identification plan. Wisconsin Statute 118.153 requires the board to approve the district's at-risk identification plan every year. Our processes are aligned well to state statute, and we provide clear guidance and support to all school teams using this process. The only changes this year are in regard to data sources we are utilizing, as COVID-19 school closures significantly impacted the data. school closures significantly impacted the data, and example of this is the state academic testing data that did not happen last spring due to no testing. On a 5-0 vote, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the district's processes and procedures for identifying at-risk students in grades 5 through 12. We request board approval and ISO move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Questions, comments? I mean, basically, this has been the same as previous years, and so we're familiar with it. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the risk identification plan.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Bill Baumgart?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Corey Montiel?
Aye.
Karen Reinecheck?
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Pass is 9-0, Sue? Greg?
The first discussion information item was the secondary hybrid learning update for grades 6 through 12. The secondary hybrid learning model is a newer learning model for some teachers, students, and parents, although flipped lesson design has been around for several years. Hybrid learning is more than just passing half of your syllabus into a virtual classroom. Instead, it is a comprehensive approach to combining the best parts of face-to-face and online learning. Secondary teachers are expected to adhere to course standards as designed by priority learning outcomes for each of the classes that they teach. Morning Middle School Principal Robert Blessington and their instructional coach, Dr. Nancy Ramke, as well as South High School Principal Kevin Kitzler and their instructional coach, Alyssa Behrendt, gave an overview of the support that has provided for staff, a few examples of what learning looks like from teachers in their buildings, as well as the support available to our secondary students.
Is there any question? This is a discussion item.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, we, I appreciate Mr. Dietz adding that to agenda. We definitely wanted to have that due to some of the feedback we had from some concerned parents, and it was good to have that information available to us.
I just want to emphasize, it's same standards, same expectations, face-to-face or virtual. That's what we're looking at. The MAP data we're looking at is going to be, it doesn't matter if you're attending virtually or face-to-face, it doesn't matter. The MAP test scores are the MAP test scores, and we'll see where our students are at and put together plans to help move them forward. So that's how we're approaching this, and I think that was made fairly clear at our meeting at TNL last time.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
And, you know, thanks for, Ms. Landish, having some staff there to talk about the hybrid situation and how it's being approached. We shared ideas for, can we enrich that environment more? Can we increase the learning opportunities beyond what they would have had face-to-face? And they were interested in that idea, and they were going to go back and, as a team, look at that as a concept to provide more enrichment in the hybrid thing. Not that we're trying to keep hybrid, but we should make it as good as we possibly can for the time being.
Mrs. Reinecheck, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I wasn't sure if I should bring this up now or at the end, but it's, because this ties in, I will, and you can let me know.
Does it deal with hybrid learning?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Then go for it.
Well, some of our, we've gotten some feedback from some of our parents regarding what the kids are actually learning, and some of it is not, like, when I just underlined that this is being held to our standards, I don't know if the secondary teachers are expected to adhere to course standards, but yet some teachers are going outside of those standards and choosing their own videos and putting those on to watch. And it's not just in one classroom. And so because there's been some, let me just stop for a second. In my nine years of being on the board, there's been certain issues, very sporadic, but now there's a lot. And I don't know if they're being held to the same standard as they always have been, if they're being checked on, if they're, our administration is reviewing their syllabus, would these teachers be showing these things to the students if their parents were in the classroom? So I'm wondering, how are they being held accountable to the standards that we're setting? Is that changing? Because it seems like they're pulling some things that are not okay.
Anyone in administration like to tackle that? Sure, Dr. Seibert? Oh, Ms. Landish?
Ms. Reinecheck, they, we have the same accountability structures in place, as Mr. Como mentioned, for both face-to-face and virtual, period. So our administrators are observing classrooms, both virtual and face-to-face, are, again, accountable and responsible for course learning standards. What I think might be happening, as you're referencing, is we've had open doors in the classrooms that administrators and other teachers have had accessibility to, and now we have open classrooms that parents have accessibility to. So if there is a concern around any kind of virtual classroom environment with the election year coming up, this, quite honestly, we do get an update, and things are happening that we don't have many people. I would continue to bring the feedback directly to the teacher.
And I do know specifically some of the things that you were talking about, Mrs. Reinecheck. I do know our administration has properly addressed those. I can say that, and that's why we need to be communicating appropriately, whether you're a parent, you're a teacher, you're a student. We need to work, again, together with one another, and if there are issues, you know, if a parent has an issue with a class, you need to go to the teacher and start there. Because that teacher might not even know there's an issue, okay? And there are ways to go beyond that, too, but going to the appropriate person with the information is really important. And we're in this all together, and I appreciate you bringing up the point, because there have been some very interesting issues that I, too, have seen. So I appreciate you bringing that up, and I appreciate us saying, hey, we're going to be held accountable, and we are going to do the things that are right that we need to do to keep things moving forward appropriately. Anything else on the hybrid, secondary hybrid learning environment?
Yes, Amanda?
Just a couple of points, I mean, there are things that I've heard from families or experienced myself as a parent with the child in hybrid. One of the voiceless concerned, or concerned comments was that this is, this hybrid model is a complete failure. I just tell my kids, try not to speak in obsolete, you know, elutes, and saying just, it's all or nothing. I tell them, sometimes when you don't get what you initially wanted for it, it doesn't mean that all is lost yet. So to say that the last two weeks have been a complete failure, I would respectfully disagree and say, you know, that, to me, disregards what our staff and administration have worked so hard to do thus far. That doesn't mean that there might not be issues with those families. We can address those one-on-one. The other thing that I wanted to mention was the in, oh, the virtual side of the hybrid learning is not getting as much learning time. Well, in an average classroom day, I don't have the breakdown. I meant to get it in advance, but I didn't. Not every single minute of the seven hours that the children are in school is in straight instructional time. I've, in the past, been in my children's classes, they have what they call brain breaks, or in the secondary levels, they have passing times, or they just take, you know, teachers given their instruction, children are working on their piece, the teacher says, all right, just sit and read for a moment, take that break. So for the children that are working at home virtually on their virtual days, not every, you know, not all of the time is going to be filled instructionally, in the way I think that parents are anticipating. Let's see, what they're actually learning, yes, as they said here already, that we're following our standards, but from some feedback from parents, I've heard that the children are learning independent studies, they're learning to self-advocate for themselves in their education, they're learning at a collegiate level style with alternating days and how to time manage their work for themselves. Another said that they're learning to, that life turns on a dime, and you're going to have to figure out what your plan A's and B's are. So those are some of the things that some families have told us. My own daughter told me that that day last week, when, I think it was a Tuesday or Thursday, that we lost the, oh my gosh, I lost it. The, when we had the fiber optic issue, she went back to school the next day, and the teacher said, Elise, you guys were at home and you guys were able to work on other things. He goes, they too, in-person classroom, lost those abilities. They didn't have that access, they had the teacher in front of them, but they didn't have that access. So it's, you know, those sitting in the virtual instruction weren't, and the in-person instruction, they weren't, they were somewhat on the same level because we lost the technology for the time being, but I don't say these things to lean one way or the other. I'm just wanting to share what has been shared with me or we have experienced personally in our home with hybrid.
Yeah, the technology glitch that you talk of with the fiber optic scenario, if you take a look at how long that network has been in and how well that's been performed, it was just a tiny little blip. I know it was inconvenient, I'm not trying to underplay that, but we have a really good, stable network in general. And so it was unfortunate that it happened, and there will be technical glitches going forward, too, but that particular glitch doesn't happen, it happens almost never in this district, so. Knock on wood, if I could find some? Anything, thank you. Thank you, Josiah. Any, I thought that was you. Well, maybe that was Corey. Greg, do you, do you have anything else on this particular topic?
Greg does.
Me?
Yes.
No, I'm ready to go on to the next one.
Okay, all right. Appreciate your patience.
Okay. The second discussion information item to report on this evening is the reading state statute educational process goals. Lucy Yow, Director of Elementary Learning, provided an annual report to the GMRD committee, updating the board on the district's comprehensive literacy model, as well as the phonological awareness literacy screening for grades 4K through 2nd, known as PALS, and the measures of academic progress, which are referred to as MAPS. The district will once again administer MAPS testing for grades 2nd through 8th, with 9th grade once again being optional.
This is a discussion item, too, Greg, correct?
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Yeah, the MAPS test, I believe, has been held on September 21st? Yeah, September 21st, so, parents, students, look forward to that. Okay, Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report for this evening. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, here in the boardroom at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our Government Relations Committee, given by Ms. Roddy.
Yes, sir, thank you. The Government Relations Committee met on Thursday, September 9, 2020. There were no action items for the committee to approve. There were, however, three discussion information items on the agenda. The first item that was reviewed, excuse me, the first item reviewed was Southeast Wisconsin School Alliance of the SWSA annual report. The full board had recently approved another year's membership with this group. We are part of a consortium of 32 districts representing over 200,000 students across the region. As part of this discussion, the committee talked about how the full, how the full board could give their input to our board representative who are attending these meetings. Are there any questions or discussions pertaining to that item? Nope, saying none, moving on. Our next discussion information item had to do with a proposal that came from Senator Capanga's office, the LRB-6422. This proposal relates to the alternative application process for open enrollment and the available space in the open enrollment program for the 2020 school year. This proposal does not currently have a timeline to come before the Senate floor. We just wanted to bring it to the committee and ultimately the full board's attention. Any questions or discussion regarding that item? Saying none, we'll continue on to the last discussion item that we had, it had to do with the SDW alumni group. The committee discussed if there were any possibilities for this group to collaborate with our committee. Dr. Seibert had shared that the administration had already invited the alumni group to be a part of two community committees, the District Curriculum Council and the District Equity Team. That being noted, the committee chose to let the group continue to work with administration. Any questions or discussions regarding that item? Yes, sir?
I just want to commend not only the administration, but you, Ms. Roddy, and the committee for doing that. And I want to particularly commend the School de Saguaccha Alumni Group. I've dealt with them. The greatest thing I've seen come out of that is the problem-solving technique. And regardless of what people's position is and what they're asking for in SRROs, and I had a long conversation with them about SRROs, and we just disagree, but how they've handled it, you know, identify the problem, identify the people who are in the room who can make the decisions, clarify their position, understand the other side's position, and then try to discuss it. And then, at that point, you know, they asked for a seat at the table, which is what they got. So I commend everybody who is part of that, because that's problem-solving. If we can teach our students and set that example, which is what you guys are doing, what they're doing, that's a huge, huge accomplishment. So I'm just glad to see it. So, good work.
Right, thank you very much. Yes, definitely was a team effort, and they were part of our council meeting today, so that was, it was nice to see them there. That was a sidebar. With the Government Relations Committee coming together, we have a list of great topics that we'll be bringing forward in future meetings. The next meeting for the Government Relations Committee is to be determined, however, as per our last board report, we will continue to report out to the full board each quarter. With that, Mr. President, thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our Safety and Security Committee, given by Mrs. Reinecheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have, we did not meet, so I do not have a report to give tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Human Resource and Compensation Committee, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We don't, we didn't have any action items for tonight beyond what the staff, stuff that was handled in the agenda. We did have one discussion information item, and it was a COVID update, where we had the, our medical professionals come in and present to us a summary of how they've been handling COVID in the first two weeks of school. They covered quarantine practices and impact on staff versus students. They discussed the cooperation they've had from parents and staff, and described it as excellent. We went over the flu season impact, and that flu season generally starts in October, and they felt that the mitigation factors we've done with masks might actually reflect in lowering infections in the flu. So we may be able to navigate the flu season and the COVID season and stay open, which is our number-one goal, is make sure we stay open. There will be a future report in October from the same group. We're going to, at HR, we're going to allocate just a little extra time. Meetings are generally before board meetings, just so we're on top of the, of what's happening in terms of quarantine policies, how it's affecting staff and students, and are we staffed up to handle it. So we're going to stay on top of this at the HR committee. It's going to be a topic that we're going to stay on at least next meeting, and the board will receive copies of the reports, probably after that meeting will be in the Friday packet. So that concludes my report, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay. Tonight, I'm providing an update of what was discussed at our August Policy Committee meeting, because I have no action items to present this evening. Several legal policies were given final approval by the committee and were forwarded to Niola to be updated on our website. to Neola to be updated on our website. We have several policies we've been working on in the past, I'm going to report on. The drug-free workplace policies were held over to the, for a future policy, future policy committee meeting for final discussion. The seclusion and restraint policies were discussed, and any further questions can be directed, direct to the Student Service Department for questions. And finally, the issue of elected officials speaking in our schools and corresponding policies were discussed, and no further action was determined necessary. The next policy committee meeting will be in October, as we've determined we didn't have enough for the policy committee meeting in September. That's been canceled, and we are informed that Neola has a big pile of stuff coming our way, so.
I heard the number was, like, 40.
That's correct.
So the rumor's correct, Bill?
That's correct.
Oh, man.
And that's probably not all of them.
Oh, no.
But, and actually, one of the reasons we're holding off for our meeting, our current meeting, would be that our administrative staff gets together with Joe and Lynn and working about which ones, you know, is there anything in here we need to be concerned about? So we have some delay necessary, so we can get to it in October. That's, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our Technology Committee, given by Mrs. Voight.
We have not met, but as many of you have seen, the many emails coming our way from Steve Schloomen, I think we need to do a real shout-out to Steve Schloomen and the tech team and all the work they've done over the last month, two months, to be able to, you know, get the courses all set up in Blackboard and set up the virtual conferencing and WebEx, and troubleshoot to find that little bitty 10-micron in diameter piece of single, you know, fiber cable that caused the disruption, disruption of the entire system. Just the troubleshoot to be able to find that and be able to solve it in a matter of hours is amazing. So I think we really need to give them a lot of credit, and a real shout-out to them for all they've done to make this happen.
Very much so. I don't remember how many emails I have been receiving from Steve at 10:00 p.m., 12:30 a.m. I think I had a 1:30 a.m. in there last week. I mean, and thanks to him and his team, yeah.
Well, that's my only report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no action items this evening, but I have six discussion information items. Our first discussion information item is a monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget and all other funds as well. Are there any questions about the monthly budget report? All right, moving on to our second discussion information item is a referendum construction projects update. Matt Settleman from Findorf and Kate Egan from Bray were in attendance to provide an update on the referendum construction happening across the district. They reviewed the work completed this past summer and discussed planning for the summer of 2021. The overall budget is approximately $82,000 over budget, which is just one-tenth of the total construction budget. I'm sorry, one-tenth of 1% of the construction budget. The budget estimate is based on early budget projections for the summer of 2021 projects and the assumption that all contingency funds are spent. The use of $1 million in fund tend, fund balance to complete improvements in Hawthorne was also discussed. This money will be primarily used for an elevator and will likely cross over the next two fiscal years. Any discussion on the referendum projects?
Yeah, Darren?
I just want to mention that I emailed the whole slideshow that everyone, so if you want to see.
Oh, that new one? Is your mic on?
I emailed the slide deck to you also this afternoon, so if you want to take a look at the entire thing, you can. There's some great pictures out there of the work.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All righty, moving on, my third discussion information item is the Community Growth Report. Mr. Clark shared the 2020 addendum to the 2015 Community Growth Report. Projected residential home starts, especially in the southwest area of Waukesha, are growing, even though Waukesha is mainly land-lack. The information in the Community Growth Report and enrollment study that was presented back in January will be used in the development of long-term budget and facility planning. Questions?
Go ahead.
My fourth information discussion item is the HVA system plasma ionization. The committee discussed plasma ionization HVAC systems and the potential benefits to our district. The committee asked the administration to provide additional information before any further action would be considered. Once more information is available, we can then determine if we have schools we'd like to install the system or systems in, perhaps even testing the system in one of our sites to develop baseline data to decide if we should proceed installing these systems in other schools.
What is plasma ionization, in 25 words or less?
An air filtration system.
Air purification? Two words, very good.
I'm trying, I'm trying to move it along.
Thank you. It zaps viruses.
Well, yeah.
Among other things.
Mr. Brian?
I would just recommend, and I think you guys probably are, I didn't see the meeting, so I can't, you know, I apologize that I didn't see the meeting. I just think we have to be very careful with, you know, I think it gets back to what something you said earlier tonight by Mr. Montiel, there's such a thing as overkill, and I'm not sure with what we know so far about the virus, which just keeps changing all the time, it seems like we're being told the masks have been very effective, and so unless there's a really well-defined need, avoid extreme extra cost.
Anything else? All righty, moving on to my fifth information, discussion information item is City of Waukesha Tax Incremental Financing District Number 29. The committee discussed the Waukesha Tax Incremental Financing Plan for Tax Incremental District Number 29. The city is looking to develop a section of downtown that would include elderly housing. Anybody have any questions? The district is basically City Hall, the little strip that City Hall's on, and across the street, the old Gendusa Pharmacy for the townies that are on the Board.
The old police station?
Yeah.
Annex, whatever it's called?
Mm-hmm.
And then on the corner there, just the.
Yeah, the leather restoration place. My final discussion information item is the 2020, 2021 Budget Development Update. Mr. Clark reviewed several topics that still need to be addressed before the final budget and levy can be approved in late October. The final budget that will be brought forward will likely be a deficit budget in the range of $2 to $2.5 million due to costs related to our COVID response. As we have been discussing the last several months, the reserves generated in fiscal year 2019, 2020 will be used to offset potential deficits in the next two budget cycles. Our next FNF meeting is on October 12 at 5:30 in the Boardroom. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for items to be agendized at the full Board, or perhaps at one of the committees? All right, seeing none. Darren, I don't think we need to close sessions tonight, correct? All right, so I appreciate everybody attending tonight's meeting, and we are adjourned.